Okay, all right, then I think let's start the recording. And. Is it recording? Okay, so I am going to call the meeting to order. It is the Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, Mendon Select Board Meeting, and it is six thirty-three. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. So as we start, if you could just stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the ally of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just as one.
Thank you. All right, so first, first order of business. So this is a hybrid meeting, and I'm going to announce that one of our members is participating remotely. So Mike Morali is participating remotely and present in person in the room. We have Mike Goddard and myself, Elena Brugos, and our other two members are not in the meeting. So let's see. See, then, I guess. All right, so I guess we will start with citizen statements and petitions. And I would say if, if somebody could help me keep an eye for hands up online, I'll just just speak up if you see somebody with their hand up. Okay, and I don't see anybody, any hands up either, either place, so we'll move on to item number three, which is approval of meeting minutes. So we have three sets of minutes to look at, so for January third, January seventeenth, and February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
I move to approve the January third, January seventeenth, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four minutes.
Mike Morali, second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, so because we have one member who's attending remotely, we're going to do all of the votes as roll call votes, so I'll do a roll call vote. Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Morali, aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. So next on the agenda is just the circulation of meeting minutes for review for approval at a future meeting from June twenty-sixth, open session, June twenty-sixth, executive session, and July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. And we are not voting on these, it's just to give people a chance to have, to look at them, to go over those. Any, any discussion there?
This is Jeremy Stoll, Town Administrator. There was one member who submitted a revision to some of the minutes, so I will send the board revised minutes to vote on at the next meeting. Which, that was great, that was the point of sending them out early, so you could have a little bit more time to review them before actually voting on them on the floor. So they will be on your next agenda to vote as revised.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, but you can probably hear my voice is a little bit scratchy. If you have trouble hearing me online, please let me know, and I can at least move the microphone closer. All right, so next up is, so item five, we wanted to acknowledge some, some key staff changes. So first of all, we wanted to acknowledge the upcoming retirement of Principal Assessor Gene Berthold, who's been with the town for many, many years in a number of different roles. And also the retirement of Building and Planning Administrative Assistant Gail Wellman, who's also worked for the town for many years. And it is our, it's, I guess, my hope that we can formally acknowledge both of them. So this is not the formal acknowledgement, this is the, coming, discussing a way in which we can formally acknowledge their roles in our town for, for, for actually decades in the case of both of them, I believe. And so I guess I would be looking for a motion if either of the other members would like to.
I move to grant Gene Berthold and Gail Wellman Select Board citations for their contributions to the town of Mendon.
Is there a?
Mike Morali, second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I guess I will just add that we are going, we've, I've reached out to both the Board of Assessors and also the Planning Board to get input about like as we, as we write these citations, to make sure that we get our facts straight. And so, but also probably will be looking for input from other community members. So, you know, if, please reach out to us. If we don't reach out to you, reach out to us, and we'll do our best to include your contributions as we, as we craft these. So I guess, if there's no further discussion, we'll bring it to a roll call vote. Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Morali, aye.
Okay, great, thank you, it passes unanimously. Next up, so next up, still in, in item five, but more acknowledgements about personnel changes. So I'd like to introduce, first of all, our new Town Administrator, Jeremy Stone, who is here to my left. Jeremy, would you like to say hello?
Certainly, hi, thank you, everyone, we thought it was important for a new face to be contextualized before the meeting started. So yeah, I started as Town Administrator last week, I'm excited to be, to be here and I'm joining this great team in Mendon.
Thank you, Jeremy, and then we'd also like to introduce and welcome our new Select Board Executive Assistant Katie Moxom, who is over at the other end of the table. Katie, would you mind saying hello? Great, okay, thank you so much. And so, you know, please reach out to us if you need to know how to contact either of these people, they do have town emails, there's a, like, the website lists the Administrative Assistance email address, as well as, I believe, the Town Administrator's email address. But if you have trouble finding those, anyone in the public, we're happy to help direct you, and both of them are going to be very helpful to us as we move forward in the town. Any other comments on that item?
Welcome aboard, glad to have you, folks.
Thank you. I agree, it's a, we, we had, we had some gaps, we had excellent people in these roles, but then we had some times where we did not have quite enough people in these roles. All right, so item six is correspondence, and this one is a little bit, a little bit longer than usual, and I'm just gonna read something that I wrote here, because we had a specific correspondence that we need to respond to. So first of all, I want to thank members as a public, especially residents of our community, for their engagement with this board and with other town boards and committees. It's our goal as public bodies to be transparent and to fully comply with open meeting law requirements. However, it has come to our attention that we sometimes fall short of this goal. We appreciate input that helps us to, to do better, so we hope to keep communication lines open, and we welcome feedback. That being said, we've received correspondence that both merits and requires a formal response from the board, and so I ask that Jeremy, our new Town Administrator, address this next item.
Thank you. This, I wrote a memo regarding this and circulated it to the board as part of their meeting packet, I'm not going to read the entirety of the memo, but I will contextualize it here. On July fifth, the town received an open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins of Northport, Alabama, regarding the June twenty-sixth Select Board Meeting. The complaint form has been attached to my memo and circulated to the board. Under Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, we have four points of responsibility, disseminate the complaint to the Select Board, meet to review within fourteen business days, respond within writing within fourteen business days, and send that response with a copy to the office, to the Office of the Attorney General. There were six complaints listed, six violations listed in the complaint, three were not founded, I'll go through the other three, just so the community is, is aware of the steps we're taking to correct them. The vice chair did not announce the meeting was being recorded, and now our agendas say open meeting and start recording, so we'll be, we'll be sure to be attentive to that as, as we move forward. The second one was the agenda did not contain the list of candidates that would be considered for appointments and reappointments. That was an oversight, unintentional, and future agendas will include both the candidates and the positions. And there were not roll call votes when one member was participating remotely. So we've, as you can tell, so far tonight, we have one member participating remotely, and we are taking roll call votes for everything. So those are the three actions, unintentional, did not change outcomes of, of votes, which is important, but not the sole point. So this response, not my memo, but a very similar one, depending on the vote here, drafted by Town Council, which has already been drafted in our review, will be sent to the complainant this week within our fourteen business day window. So I'd be looking for a motion to, to delegate responsibility on the board's behalf.
I move to delegate responsibility to respond to the complaint to Town Council.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote. Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Morali, aye.
Thank you very much.
So, so one thing I would probably suggest here is there's different policy documents being drafted, just want to make sure this gets weaved into those, because I think what some of these things are probably not just Select Board specific, but committee specific, and to get the word out to folks, but just stating things are being recorded, given that's our policy.
Yes.
Certainly, and what I should have added during discussion, and I will add now, is that included in the memo, there are two links to open meeting law education materials and a training seminar for members to attend, which I encourage, and we're working with Town Council to schedule townwide open meeting law sessions for boards to which this applies. So we will formalize it and have a procedure on board, so thank you for that.
And just, I will note that I did already register for the next upcoming open meeting law training session, I couldn't, there was one yesterday, but I had a work conflict, so I think it's sometime in early August, so I signed up for that, that webinar. And so, yes, thank, thank you, Jeremy, for passing on those resources to us, and we'll make sure to take advantage of them and disseminate the information to other boards. So, thanks, Mike. Okay, let's move on to item seven, and so which is to consider the appointment of Christopher, sorry, is it Pushy? Heavy Equipment Operator, Highway Department, pending successful background check, and so here, if you could just introduce yourself.
Jonathan Dudley, Highway Surveyor. I am asking the board to consider appointing Christopher Pushy to Heavy Equipment Operator for the Mendon Highway Department. He comes to us with, he is an eight-year veteran of the Marine Corps, he's currently working at the transfer station in Milford, and he would come to us with all the required licenses for the job. So I ask your consideration.
Great, thank you very much. Let's see, any, any questions for the candidate or comment?
Good.
So yes, thank you for, for bringing the candidate forward, thank you for joining us tonight, so I guess I would, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Christopher Pushy to the full-time position of Heavy Equipment Operator, pending successful background check in the Mendon Highway Department at a rate of twenty-two dollars and forty cents per hour.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing that, we'll move to the roll call vote. Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Morali, aye.
Thank you very much, so thank you so much, welcome to Mendon, okay, thanks for joining us tonight.
Just bring you to full staff. Thank you.
Thanks for fixing that motion. Thanks for fixing that motion.
All right. My call drops.
You're doing a great job.
All right, so next up on the agenda is to talk about the senior and community, senior and community center ballot question update, and so I would like to invite the members of our senior center expansion committee to join us at the table. If you don't mind just introducing yourselves, just so that, for the recording and for people at home, I know, I know who you are, we know who you are.
Egnogera.
And, and you're on the committee.
Yes, as a secretary.
Dave Curzy, Vice Chair of the Committee.
So thank you so much, do you have like an update that you wanted to talk us through?
I think what we wanted for today was to approve the ballot question and get that on for November, and then I saw that you guys wanted to possibly talk about directives, so I guess we'll talk about that, too.
Yes, so let's see, I guess board members had a chance to look at the ballot question, so the ballot question language that we got from Town Council.
So this is a little different than what we've done in the past, I think, right? So the time, do we want to walk through the timing of why we're doing it this way?
Yeah, actually, Jeremy, should you do that?
Certainly, so in order to include a ballot question for a Prop Two and a Half debt exclusion on the November ballot, we need to send a certified vote, attested by the Town Clerk to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office by August seventh. So this, there is not a regular scheduled meeting before that, so we're taking up the question now. There is a two-part process that's not necessarily serial, that Town Meeting must also approve the measure. A little frustratingly, we are prohibited from putting a dollar value on the ballot question, so that's why there's not, you won't hear a dollar value discussed tonight in getting the question on the ballot. Town Meeting will discuss a dollar value, so should this pass on the ballot, the number will be ratified by Town, will be, Town Meeting will be asked to ratify a number, and there will be clear and consistent communication on what that ask is well in advance of the November election. So there's not a number here, we're not voting on a number here, but it will be clear to the community what, what that request is and taxpayer impact and all that beforehand.
But, but it's fair to say that by taking this step, the board is supporting the, bringing the senior center back to the town in the November timeframe in conjunction with the biannual state election, which is the presidential election. If you are taking that step to kind of move it in that timeline, yes.
That's, that's exactly true, and by doing it in advance of special town meeting and doing it on the November election, we avoid having to run another election at a cost to the town. We're running this election anyway, there's no marginal cost to adding those questions for us.
In terms of the details, so both, both Elaine and I sit on the, the committee, so as, as the alternate, I'll just say this, that if people, people should expect this to be a topic in this meeting going up through the election, so some of the information that Jeremy shared in terms of dollar amounts, things like that, design, all that will be reviewed in a number of places, meetings, but it'll definitely be seen here, so those people interested should, you know, join us either remotely or here in the building, because I think this will be a topic as we accelerate the process to get everything ready by November.
I would ask that the committee give us a little bit of an update of where we are in the process, but I think we could probably vote on, on the ballot language. So, and another point is the ballot language is very constrained by the Proposition Two and a Half law, so like, there's, it's basically, there's room for variation in the name of the project, I think, and, and the name of the town, that the municipal.
That's the only blanks.
But we need to still vote to, to be explicit about accepting, accepting this town ballot language, so that the Town Clerk can certify it.
But we appreciate the support of the Select Board with this, we appreciate it. We know how hard both of you have worked on the committee.
I think the other thing I'd say, too, because it's not explicit, but this will be a debt exclusion, correct, two and a half exclusion for debt.
So the ballot vote, the ballot vote simply just authorizes you to spend beyond two and a half and be exempt from it. If we were to, if we had the money within our operating budget or some other, a grant, a federal grant, and we're going to take it within our own levy, we would just need the town. So this is just to authorize the, the debt exclusion, to your point.
And I just want, the clarity I want for people listening is it's a debt exclusion, meaning it's not an operational override, which raises your taxes in perpetuity.
Yeah.
This is a one-time debt exclusion.
Correct.
I think there's some confusion in the spring, that's my sense, given articles and information that was disseminated.
When the debt service goes away, the tax goes away.
Yep.
We hope to get that crystal clear to the voters.
I think you did.
Well, we want to try harder.
It does get confusing, because it is an override, this is not operational override.
Language, you're like, override is correct, but it's.
It's a debt exclusion.
And I think we can reach more, so so I think, I guess I would be looking for a motion about the item A, about the ballot language.
I move that the Select Board authorizes the following question under Proposition Two and a Half to be submitted to the second State Secretary, not later than August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, so that the question appears on the November election ballot. Quote, shall the town amendment be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond in order to fund, design, and construct the Mendon Senior Community Center?
Second?
A second.
Any further discussion on this ballot question? Okay, so I, I don't hear any more discussion, so I will bring it to a roll call vote. Brugos, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Morali, aye.
Great, thank you, the motion passes, so now we'll lead to, there's a process for sending this to the Town Clerk, so Jeremy, are you taking care of that?
Yes, I will do that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so then I guess I would like to just, now that we've established that, if you could just give us a little bit of an update about where things are in terms of what the proposal will be that will be put to the town.
Yeah, so since the last meeting, we had approved an additional amount to go to the architect. The architect currently is working on a new plan design, we're basing this off of feedback that we've received through the community, so all of us have the whole committee, a feedback we received on critical issues on why this may have failed. It was a close vote, about fifty-two votes, so we're trying as a committee to weigh out what we think are the most important things for the community to address. One thing will be size and costs, we're premature right now to give a number on that, because whatever we do with size and costs is going to be a reduction to the building and the services that were going to be provided. The analysis that was originally done was a fifty-year need analysis, not a want, a need analysis, so we, whatever we're working with and the numbers we're working with, we are, as a group, collectively figuring out what will be best for the town, the senior center, the population, to reduce, but still have a senior center that will last us for a period of time, maybe not fifty years, but ten or twenty years, with maybe room for addition, but we need the critical, at the critical infrastructure there, and that's what we're working on right now, so we're kind of premature to give a number, and I, I wouldn't want to give a number, because we did that before with the tax impact, and it had a detriment effect on the vote.
So there isn't a number, but I, from what I understand, the goal is for that number, whatever it is, the goal is to have the number be lower than the last.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Knowing that there may already be some effects of inflation even six months later.
Right.
We want it to be a significant amount lower, but right now it's figuring out what exactly you can sacrifice from the project. Like, I wouldn't say do without, it's more a sacrifice.
So whether that is the goal, is to reduce the total cost and therefore reduce the impact on the taxpayers.
Correct.
Change direction.
Any questions?
I'm good.
So I mean, there was the possibility of whether we would like to sort of have like formal guidance from the Select Board that we want to aim for, like an amount below what was asked for in May. Don't know that we need to do this, but it is an option, and if it's helpful in some way, I'm.
I, I think we're looking at several options, so to put a number in the sand, I would say right now would be kind of hard to do, I'd say maybe, we're looking at a variety of things, and maybe we come back with the options, hopefully within a month or so, then you can give the direction on which one you like.
I think it was going to be more in the, in the amount of sort of, just basically less than what we asked for last time.
Yeah, that's a given.
It's going to be sort of the extent of it, not how much less, or like not setting any sort of bar other than not exceeding the bar that we already had.
Yeah.
So I'd be open to that motion, but also it's, you know, I'm open to discussion, I mean, I think it's all, it's the understanding of all of us, this is the goal, and we want to be communicating that goal to the public at every chance we, in every chance we have, that that is the goal, is to reduce the ask, because that is.
So, I mean. So what I, so it seems like what we're trying to do is to ensure that whatever we come back with is going to be less than the original amount in response to the feedback that we've heard.
Correct.
And it's binding to the point where the board's saying we'll, we're supporting things less than the original thirteen point two number. Aside from that, it does not limit what the committee's doing in terms of scenarios.
Yeah.
I mean.
If it is helpful with the architect in some way, that we have, that if there's formal directive from the Select Board, for example, it's an option.
Well, we're meeting every two weeks, and we would be more than happy to, if you put us on the agenda to give you an update, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, and it, we're going to go back up, probably ramping up every week again like we were, you know, we were doing that for all, we're going to ramp up to that every week again soon, like we were, I think with the summer, it's kind of tough, you know, we're doing the, the spring, we're going to need to, I mean, we have a time constraint, we got to get this done, so we'll be pushing it ahead, and your next meeting, you know, when that's going to be?
It's like twenty-third or something, no, wait.
No, no, your next meeting, the next board's meeting.
Yeah, August.
August seventh.
August seventh, yeah, I mean, we should, we should have some.
We will.
Some information by then, hopefully, if we can get on that agenda, too, and it might be helpful just to be on every agenda for the next, for the fall.
Topic for everybody to know all the information about it, so early and often.
Did you talk with the architect the other day with Phil, or was it just?
It was just Phil, I was on vacation.
He's on vacation this week, otherwise he would have been here, and I don't know what transpired.
And so Jeremy, do you have any, any thoughts about like recommendations about whether it would be useful to have this vote, or you put it on here as an option?
Yeah, I think the committee and the board are on the same page and are listening to community feedback, all working towards the same thing, and having consistent updates and interaction with the group, I think, I think the board's voice is pretty clear here, and that the charge is clear to the committee, so I, I don't find the.
Okay, great, all right, then I think, yeah, we can, we can forego that formal vote. All right, so any, any more to add about, about this project? All right, well, I want to say that I appreciate you continuing to work on this, I know it was a huge amount of work leading up to May, and so like, you know, people did not need to keep going, but I think it says a lot about our community, the dedication to keep going on this project.
The need is still there, it hasn't gone away.
Need is still there, and our, yeah, our community still has the need, but I still appreciate the individual community members for continuing to give their time, because I know it is, I know it's a lot, and so I, I appreciate that.
We owe it to the seniors.
Yes.
We owe it to the seniors.
And we owe it to Mendon, yeah, we just said it, the community, because our windows, we have a window here to maintain that debt, you know, and set a level, level line with it, and if we lose it, debt's going to drop off, and it's going to be harder to add new debt, and then we're going to fall behind, like we always do, so this is our window of opportunity for this project, so then you can close this, the books out and work on the next project.
Yes.
Well, I mean, to that point, too, I want to make sure people understand that we got to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time, so not every project's going to be sequenced, so we might be doing two at the same time if there's need arises, so there's a lot of things that are out there, you know, we, I think one of the agenda topics is fields.
Yes, so.
There's, that, that's not to say both of these things can't happen at the same time, depending where you're coming from, there's a need for both.
But as, as a major infrastructure project, so you try to space those out, you know, five, ten years apart, and this is kind of one of our major ones.
So make sure people understand that, you know, sometimes we're going to be, you know, doing multiple projects, because it's the right thing to do, and we're going to balance that, you know, with fiscal.
Projects take multiple years to do it, so you can't wait until one project happens and then start working on the next one.
Well, they take multiple years just to get to the vote.
And ten years on this.
So, yes.
And I think the framework from capital planning standpoints coming together for the town, so we're not, we're not, these things aren't popping up anymore, we see them on the horizon, and we're taking action to plan for them.
Hope there's a good plan in place, you guys are doing a great job.
All right, so anything more? All right, thank you both, good evening, and.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Yes, twenty-third.
All right, so next up is item nine on the agenda, so, which is to review. which is to review and approve in-person early voting hours for the state primary. Believe there's something in our packets, but Jeremy, could you walk us through?
Yeah, certainly, so we are required to, based upon our community size, provide a certain level of access to in-person early voting for both primaries and general elections. Since, there's a memo here from the town clerk, since the implementation of no excuse vote by mail, the amount of in-person voters has, in-person early voters has dwindled drastically. So these hours are fewer than in prior years, but still provide all of our statutory responsibility. We see as few as two voters per hour for in-person early voting, so it doesn't, doesn't make a lot of financial sense, operational sense to, to provide a wider suite of hours.
Alright, thank you. Any, any questions on that?
Do we need to state what they are, or?
They, I think are in the motion, or do we want to state that before the motion?
I guess, no.
I mean, just, yeah, so the public can follow along, right, so we're looking at nine to one on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, ten to one on Monday, August twenty-sixth. Oh, I see. So Monday, August twenty-sixth through Thursday, August twenty-ninth would be ten AM to one PM. So that is sort of the general timeframe, reduced from previous times, but as, you know, the rationale, I think, is sound, it's. So I would be looking for a motion.
I move to approve in-person early voting hours of nine AM to one PM on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, and ten AM to one PM Monday, August twenty-sixth through Thursday, August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Brugos, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Morally, aye.
Great, thank you. We're moving right along. Okay, so next up is item ten, which is discuss and vote to allow the Mendon Cultural Council Festival to place scarecrows on town property. Hi, thank you for joining us, if you could just introduce yourself?
I'm Joanne Lamoth, I'm the chairperson of the Mendon Cultural Council.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome, thank you for having me. The Cultural Council, Mendon is a farming community, and we've decided that we'd like the scarecrows to come to town. So, we have decided we'd like to do an annual scarecrow contest, where everybody in town's allowed to participate. They could register to participate from September first to September thirtieth, with townwide voting from October first to October nineteenth. It's family-friendly, we may ask them if they could put them on the poles behind the town hall here, or up on the town common, or if they decide to put them in the, you know, the schools may do it, whoever, but just so that that person could have the capability of displaying their scarecrow. So that is why we're here.
Will people also be putting scarecrows at their homes?
They can put them at their homes, correct. What we're going to do is, we're going to, once we know where all the scarecrows are, I'm going to ask if we can update it on the Culture Council's link on their town website, and I will put a list of where all the scarecrows are in town, so people can leisurely go about and look and see where they are. And they will be able to also download a ballot, and they can vote for their scarecrows. We are giving away, we're not giving away, we're handing out trophies, one large trophy that will be annually turned over to next year's winner. And everybody will get a participation, but it's some way to promote the community and to show that we are farming, so we want the time of year.
Have you, have you considered doing a map of the locations or?
We have considered that, so that we, their, people will know where they are as far as the streets, make their way through, correct, correct. Yeah, so. So I'm asking if we could get approval for people to be able to do that.
And I just wanted to give context to, I asked at the motion, it says, subject to, location subject to approval by the town administrator. I had put that in there, because I wanted the board and the community to be assured, we're not going to block sightlines, we're not going to have, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
I, I.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not, you know.
Okay, right.
Being appreciative about selection, I'm making sure that the chief is comfortable with where they are, that we don't have two right on top of each other.
No, 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 I don't want them in sidewalks, I don't want them blocking the road, I want them, like, if they want to put them behind the town hall, on the poles back there, or up on the little common, if they want to put them up there or in their homes, no any of the roads or anything that would cause a accident or any sort.
Okay, so it's great, yes, thank you for mentioning that, because it's important to, yeah, think about, like, we don't want to have any accidental hazards.
No, no, no hazards. And I'm hoping if you guys approve, you all participate too, as far as the town.
That's it, yes, it's an interesting question, we'll have to consider that.
Consider that, yeah.
It sounds like a lot of fun, so, yeah. Great, so I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to allow the Mendon Cultural Council scarecrow contest participants to place their scarecrow entries on town property with specific placement, location subject to approval by the town administrator.
Second.
Great, thank you, any further discussion? Okay, alright, I'm going to bring it to a roll call vote, Brugos, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Morally, aye.
Thanks so much, passes, thank you.
Thank you very much, I look forward to seeing your design if you.
Thank you for your work on the cultural council.
Thank you.
So, so should we assign a lead for scarecrow design?
I'd like to see the rules exactly what we could use in the design and what we can't.
We'll find out, yeah, I think maybe there aren't as many constraints as the cardboard boat race. Alright, great.
Actually, we should appoint, we should appoint one of the members who's in abstention at the moment. You know, while they're not here and they can't object.
I move.
Sounds like we're in agreement there. Although actually, I do enjoy, like, designing things, so, but, yeah, we'll, we'll consider this. I don't know, we can see if there's any challenge from the community, like there was for the cardboard boat race. Okay, alright, yeah, might be fun to see what, what departments join in with this.
The police had a spirited entrance into the cardboard boat race this year.
I, I heard, I heard, yeah, we, the Select Board had one last year, but couldn't, couldn't float a boat this year. Okay, let's move on to item eleven, reviews, review and vote to approve mobile office trailer permit at twenty-three Cape Road pending Board of Health approval. Jeremy, can you?
Certainly, so this is a job site trailer, the specs of which were included in part in the Select Board packet. So, this, this place has a building permit already, and under Chapter Ten of the bylaws, there, there can't be a, no person shall occupy a trailer or mobile home for living or business purposes without a permit from the Select Board. It's unclear to me if these permits have been universally granted for such a, such a procedure, but when it came to our attention that there was one upcoming now, we wanted, we wanted to make sure we complied with, with the bylaw. So I've been in contact with the building inspector, who, the pending Bill, Board of Health approval is relative to the septic hauler, because there is a restroom in the trailer, and once they are approved by the Board of Health, then the trailer can be delivered and occupied. It's a sixty-foot by twelve-foot trailer, at, like I said, at twenty-three Cape Road. The project is anticipated to last thirteen to fourteen months, but any approval from the Select Board per the bylaw is only good for six months unless it's renewed. So I've been in contact with the builder, and they will make sure they reach back out to us in advance of those six months to, to give us an update, make sure there's nothing that needs to be corrected, and ask for an extension of that permit.
Alright, any questions about that? So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve a temporary trailer permit pursuant to Chapter Ten of the General Bylaws of the Town of Mendon, as amended to Arco Design Build for a sixty-foot by twelve-foot trailer at twenty-three Cape Road, pending Board of Health approval.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, bring it to a roll call vote, Brugos, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Morally, aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next up, item twelve is review and approve the revised intermunicipal agreement with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. So Jeremy, is this you also?
Yeah, certainly, so this board, prior to my tenure, approved an IMA relative to a similar, to the same concept with similar terms in May of twenty-twenty-four, and was signed by the chair. We received a amended IMA intermunicipal agreement, and with notes from the the Health Administrator. The changes are, it clarifies CMRPC, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, their role as the grant administrator, so they're going to be signing the IMA as they're a party to it, they previously hadn't signed. And then it spells out what the administrator can do with their admin fee. So ten percent, what, the proposal here is ten percent of that fee goes to Northbridge to ensure the budgetary flexibility there, and five percent with CMRPC. All other terms of the agreement remain as they were. So we are looking for approval to have Select Board sign this updated agreement.
Any, any questions? So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant by and between Mendon, Blackstone, Douglas-Hope, Dale, Millville, Northbridge, Upton, and Uxbridge, and the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission.
Very second.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? I don't hear any, so we'll bring it to a roll call vote, Brugos, aye?
Goddard, aye.
Morally, aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next item is number thirteen, which is to discuss instructing town administrator to procure interim finance director slash treasurer slash collector services. And so Jeremy, could you walk us through this one?
Certainly, so I'm sure the committee will have, have things to add, but just to contextualize it for those listening, we recently had a resignation of our finance director, treasurer, collector, and have appointed the assistant treasurer collector as an interim treasurer collector. We are also currently undergoing organizational analysis from the Collin Center EMS Boston. So this decision point, this discussion here is, you know, there's not enough hands in the office to process the amount of volume that we have there right now. So this is how we, how we stabilize that in the short to medium term, depending on how the board wants to approach it. So there's a few, a few different options, the, we've had a, after this agenda was compiled and the packet circulated, we got terms from the prior finance director, treasurer, collector, on what her proposal for interim services in the short term would be. And then there are some other outside agencies which have both short and medium term options. That, I'm looking at, at two right now that specialize in Massachusetts interim services. So what this is, this is asking is, what, what's the board's preference, what direction do you want to give to me to go and not necessarily sign and procure these services, but get proposals as to what we, as a, as an entity should be doing. Of course, we'll contextualize and give my opinions on them as we get them, but I think it's important for this board to set the direction for me to then go and do the work for the board.
So I'm just looking back at our, our minutes from the June twenty-sixth meeting where we appointed the interim treasurer collector, I think. We also did consider another proposal for additional services.
The Roselli, the auditors?
Yes, so.
I think they help us close out the books.
Roselli Clark?
Yeah.
Right, so I think, I mean, I guess, just to put that sort of in, I, I, we could contextualize that one.
Yeah, so if, I, I don't see that in minutes right now, but Roselli Clark is our independent third-party auditor, so I would not want our independent third-party auditor to also be the.
Right, right, so this is, so we've got multiple, I guess, individuals or groups who are, like, potentially helping us with this, the term.
Yeah.
Services, financial services.
Elena, my suggestion is that we do what we did the last time that the treasurer collector left, when we had only, only an interim assistant, is that we hire an outside firm, we used Tom Zidellis's company at the time, he's the retired treasurer collector from Worcester, but, you know, there are two or three firms like that out there, my suggestion is that we hire one of them to, to run things, to make sure that free cash gets certified and all the things that need to be done from now till the end of the year. You know, to the end of this, to, until we replace it, and that we should, rather than advertise for an assistant treasurer collector first, we really need to, first and foremost, advertise for a new treasurer collector. So we can start that process while we have an outside firm running, and then once we do that, then we can backfill the assistant, that's the, I think that's how we've done it last time, and I think that's instructive, especially where we don't know if we're going to keep assistant, whether we're going to keep it as a finance director or a treasurer collector, because certainly, I think statutorily, they have to be a treasurer collector. They can be a finance director as well, but that's the position that we need to have, so that's my suggestion.
Okay, thanks, Mike, Mike, Mike Goddard has something to.
So, in terms, sort of to raise it up a little bit, because I don't know who's out there, but I think what I'm hearing, Jeremy, is you're looking for some direction, is do we, do we want to, we need resources for day-to-day to some extent, right? So almost like, from my background, it'd be, we want to go get contractual resources on a contract basis, so we don't world benefits, things like that, we bring them in to get, make sure the lights stay on. And I, I mean, I would generally agree with what Mike was saying as well, the one thing I'd say, and I think you mentioned, is with the, the design work underway, if we don't know exactly what we need, we may want to have Collin Center get back to us before we start posting jobs, because I think, to Mike's point, we could have a director of finance, finance treasurer collector, treasurer, collector, director, I mean, you've got a number of different combinations, so we, I don't know what's right for Mendon right now.
Right.
But I think, direction-wise, I'd say, let's
Right.
pursue, what are the options for contract resources to keep the lights on?
Right, there, right, so there are these two issues, one is how do we, how do we keep the office fully functional, because our current staff is not enough to do.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely the, that's definitely the main thing, and that's why we had hired interim, right?
Yeah, that's the immediate one, and then there's the sort of more medium term, which is how are we going to structure this?
Right.
And so, anyhow, so yeah, I mean, I, I feel like this is, you know, this is work for Jeremy to do, to sort through the staffing, and I think I appreciate the, the proposal by the previous finance director, as somebody with knowledge of the office, so the willingness to, to continue training, because I think it, it, I think it would have been helpful to have a, a little bit more overlap, but I, so I appreciate the offer to like, continue and give a bit more, a bit more training from somebody who knows the, the Mendon office, but that's, that's my input, but I think, you know, we may have different views about this, but I also trust that Jeremy can, like, evaluate all of the options and ultimately do what is.
I'm completely deferring to Jeremy to come back with a recommendation.
I'm not going to be the treasurer collector.
Right, yeah.
But, no, but in terms of, like, the, the, the previous, the proposal we've received, I'm assuming you're getting new proposals, you're going to weigh and say, we think direction is where we should go.
But I mean, I guess the question is, I mean, so, right, the, the motion suggests that we, like, I guess, oh, actually, there is an emotion this, here in the.
It's printed here. Jen O'Neal's.
Oh, okay, so there's a hand from Jen O'Neal, yes, Jen.
So I just wanted to put out there that we, based on recommendation from the interim TA a few weeks ago, posted for assistant treasurer collector, we've gone through resume screenings and have now scheduled five interviews in the next two weeks, so before we go ahead and, I guess, spend five or six hours doing interviews, what should, what should the Char Department be doing?
My suggestion would be that you postpone that entire process, take it down, and just tell them, advise them, but I think that's, that's a I don't think we're there yet. I think you need to get the intern to keep things running, and then find out exactly who we're going to have to run the office, and then we'll find who the new assistant will be.
So I think, I mean, at this meeting, we can authorize Jeremy to oversee this process, I think that's what we'd be looking for, I think Jeremy. I think that's what we'd be looking for. I think Jeremy is the one who's going to be there, you know, in Town Hall full time and working with, able to talk with our uh interim treasurer collector, able to work with Jen O'Neil. Um as well as uh contacting the other potential resources. So I mean, I think that, you know, delegating this work to Jeremy would be.
Still moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Second, I agree.
Okay. Um because I think, yeah, this is one of the things that we hired you for.
Exactly.
So uh I think you're in a much better position to evaluate all of the options, and it's not something that we can easily decide at this meeting. And and Jen, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think that we 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 don't want to waste anybody's time.
That was Jennifer O'Neil, the um HR director for the town.
So thank you so much. Okay, do we have uh so anyhow, so so there was, I mean, so was that that was a motion uh from Mike Goddard and a second from Mike Morally to delegate this. Um actually, can we? Do we want to get formal language on this motion?
Yeah. Well, I think uh I think to Jennifer's, to Jennifer's point.
Right.
To Jennifer's point, we should, he should have the authorization to to stop the interview process. That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, if that's what makes sense.
We don't need a motion because it is in the job description of the town administrator to do this. All right.
So yes, I want, I wanted this committee's guidance, not necessarily.
Got it. Okay, excellent. Great. All right. Um so moving on then. So thank you all for your input there. And hopefully we will uh get some more help in the treasurer collector's office soon. Um, all right. So then the next item does require a vote. Yes. So item fourteen, which is to appoint Jeremy Stahl to chief procurement officer.
I move to designate town administrator Jeremy Stell as the town's chief procurement officer.
Second.
Uh discussion. Jeremy, can you?
Yeah, of course. So chapter thirty B, which governs most public procurement, municipal procurements, um defines a chief procurement officer as appointed by the the local board. References, six other things. So in order to do a number of processes within um public procurement, um you need to designate somebody. I have overseen procurement at both the Bristol County Sheriff's Office and um City of Attleboro and in a smaller extent, a portion of the public schools of Brookline. So I have a um, you know, it's probably one of my uh most most comfortable facets of public administration is Massachusetts Public Procurement.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna bring it to a roll call vote. Brugge's eye.
Goddard eye.
Morally eye.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're really moving along here. This is uh great. So um I guess. So uh old business, and I think we're probably going to have this be a lot shorter than the estimate, uh which was based on thinking that more board would be present. But plan future discussion um uh and schedule uh an approach for the select board policy and procedure document. So we will be continuing the review of that, but I think um Brendan is was the the chief uh author and editor of that document. So I think it makes sense to wait for him, but I'm um open to other other input from the board.
Question I would, and this gets back to just actually open meeting and deliberation, things like that. Is there an opportunity to centralize feedback we may have with, say, Katie consolidate board member feedback and give it to Brendan, but then have no communication back to any individuals but do it here. So he can actually update his document or have, rather than getting introduced to new ideas as we sit here, he can actually digest what we're thinking, and then we can have a discussion about and formulate that in session. Does that make sense?
Yeah, there's uh so there's two ways. We can do a working group, which I will talk about, we talked about the Collin Center retreat, which is a more formalized thing, but um not an open meeting. There's no votes being taken. Or exactly what you said, where all the board members can send everything to Katie um individually, um and Katie can synthesize and work directly with Brendan. Um and then again, there's no mo- no votes being taken that um those materials are um or those conversations are about setting an agenda item um and a work product um that then gets brought to the full floor. So I I think that's a great idea is to centralize it.
So that I think, I mean, yeah, I think that's that's great. And that the amount of synthesis, I think, is very, I mean, really, it could just be, yeah. Like bullet list consolidation.
Yeah, yeah.
For us to bring this to the future, future meeting discussions.
See, from my perspective, the document's really solid. So it's, I've got feedback, but there might be more questions, suggestions. But I think if we can get through that initial step, we'll be pretty close to finished.
Right. And I think, well, we may have like a few like additions, suggestions, things.
Well, this is a living, breathing document.
I was just thinking that, living document. Um I like, as we move along, we think of other things that might be useful to codify.
So I read it recently at the end of last week, and I I thought it was really structurally sound and covered most of what it needs. My my comments were on the margins. It will, I think, I think, you know, it's a draft in a good place and we can get to the top.
Okay, great. So hopefully in the next uh meeting or two, we can like work through that and maybe um. I don't know specific sections. I'd have to look back at what sections we did, but maybe um maybe we will, before our next meeting, we'll check with Brendan about suggestions for next sections to to cover. All right. And then we have a review, a list of the current select board liaisons to boards and commissions. Um so that I believe was in our uh packet as well. It's a little tricky because we don't have, we we have a quorum, but we are missing two members. Um so it's, it's the last page. You're like seeing me. It's sixty-five pages uh in the packet. Um yeah. So um I think maybe what we'll do is uh maybe we can formalize this next time, and I'll just ask you that uh board members look at this and we talk through it. I know, I mean, there are some possible changes to be made. I know, like, we had talked about working for the senior and community center that I would be the alternate and you would be the main uh main member. So but I think I think it makes sense to wait for this. And I know um, I guess I will, I will ask all the uh board members to have a look and see if there are any that um they would be interested in taking on and any that they would be interested in taking off that they are not able to cover adequately, for example.
Uh the one thing I'd say is I'd say for uh Mendon Upton, that's a two-person.
Yes.
Two-person job. There's a lot of meetings.
I would be, I would be interested to see if another board member would be able to help. I think it's been harder for me to attend those meetings. And I do think, I know, I I appreciate, Mike, that you've taken on all those uh subcommittee meetings.
I I think the um we should consider just moving it up, just so everybody gets a feel for what these different things are doing. I mean, there's a couple I want to stay with, but like if somebody had a, this, the school district, I think, is one that's people should dip their toes into. Just would be good for the school to and for the select board members to uh do that. And then there's like, we should probably add BBT to this too, I think. Because I think.
Interesting.
Yeah, Blackstone Valley was sort of, we kind of did schools in general, Ja- Jeremy, but we really focused on Mendon Upton, to be honest. But I think BBT is going to have some more things coming our way, and the more we can engage earlier or listen earlier, probably a good thing.
And I think, I mean, yeah, relatedly, I think we might just want to like overview what the the boards and committees are. Just to remind us what some of them do. And I think we talked about possibly, um we started doing this a couple of years ago, but doing like regular updates. And I know, I know, Katie, you had some suggestions about like community updates about like if there are specific like activities or events that a a board or commission is doing that we could uh fold those into our regular announcements, uh which I think would be would be good communication with the community. Um so anyhow, we can, we can talk about formalizing that process. But I think it makes more sense to do that with the whole board. Any other thoughts on this one?
When when do we want to it get back with, get our thoughts together for our next meeting or our second meeting in August or?
Oh, so about about these?
Yeah.
Um, how how full is August seventh looking? I feel like it's a few things.
Yeah, I'm feel like we're gonna have lots of full agendas for the next little while, but we can, we can do something similar to here. Where we, you know, put it, if we get to it, we do, and we don't, we'll get it to on the twenty-first. Um or um we can circulate it as a kind of FYI, board members, make sure you're thinking about, I know not everyone's here now, but um make sure you're thinking about this. Mark it up and come and have it ready for a discussion. Um we can circulate it ahead of time. So my my suggestion would be to put it on the October or the August seventh, and if we're not ready, we can talk about it in a different.
Great. Thank you.
We're aspiration.
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, um any more thoughts on this? All right. We're making really good time here. Um so next up is the town administrator report.
Certainly. Um so this is my first town administrator report. So um, thank you, everyone. It's kind of been a whirlwind first week, but I'm a really warm welcome from staff, residents, board members, volunteers. One thing I've really enjoyed about the community is how much community um input, um feedback, volunteer hours, um commitment to um to the work that we do. It's it's um you can tell people are proud to be part of this community, um and that that makes it a a fun place to work and to come work for every day. So I want to thank everyone for that. Um my goal over the next um the next month or so is to make sure I get to every, every town building, right? I haven't been to the library yet. Need to get to the library, get to the fire station, need to go to police roll call, those sorts of things where um I can, I can talk to some folks who I don't get to see every day in Town Hall. Um and that that'll be important for me. Um in a similar vein, I've been meeting with a lot of area leaders, um people from the State House, um meeting with the school district next week, um some other municipalities soon to connect with my peers, see where we can um where shared services make sense for us in one capacity to the other. What, you know, when we're having an issue with one community and they're having an issue with us, how we how we work through that. It's important to develop those relationships on a on a a local, regional level. My immediate priority, which we've talked about tonight, and I appreciate your guidance, is to stabilize the finance office and make sure that volume is taken care of. What I want to be clear in that kind of in that language there is that um I think the incumbent, uh the assistant, the interim treasurer collector is doing a great job. There's not a um, it's not that she is um ill-equipped for the role. It's that there is, there is too much volume for one person to handle, evidenced by the fact that we've historically had at least two people in the office. So I I just didn't, wanted to make sure that this discussion was framed in that, um you know, we are, we are supporting the work that the incumbent is doing, not um trying to detract from it. And also in a similar vein, um that the, there's knowledge transfer um in the building planning administration um and the principal assessor, the two positions we recognized earlier as retiring, long-serving um members of um Mendon Town Government, making sure that their roles, responsibilities, and specific knowledge is is documented and able to be transferred. Um so on some um um immediate, more um specific items rather than um those larger picture things. So I had my interview with the Collin Center today, um spoke for about an hour and fifteen minutes, hour and a half, um with the gentleman conducting the study, David Colton. It was a really productive conversation. Um we talked a little bit about how to structure a retreat um for the select board and um how we do that within the confines of open meeting law, which he's done a number of times. So we'll we'll find great guidance there. He is looking for um an early September date from the select board on what would make sense. Um and he wants, you know, the the where, the when, you know, the day, the time, the the where we're going to do it. All of that's kind of open for discussion and what the board um finds useful. His comment to me was, you know, this space is perfectly suited towards it, but sometimes a change of scenery um is is nice. And it, because it's a a different type of business we're transacting, so you might want a different setting. Oftentimes, school buildings are where these where these things will happen. Um so as his um deliverable gets closer, we'll make sure we nail in something that works for the board. Some future items that I'll have on here, similar to the um um finance office, where I'm kind of looking for direction. Um I'd like to establish a clearly delineated signatory policy and procedure for the for the town. Um I go back and I look at some documents, and sometimes we have department head signing stuff, sometimes the town administrator, sometimes the select board chair. I want to make sure it's clear where the select board delegates authority to me to be able to sign things um and where the select board wants individual signatures on it. Things like a grant application, I, you know, a very comfortable signing a grant application, the grant award and the acceptance of the grant quite clearly comes to this board. Some things are a little bit more gray, and I want to get some delineation on that. Uh we are um so these all running to each other. So I have a proposal from um our consultant on phase three of the water and wastewater um study. I'm not sure feasibility, planning, I'm I'm not sure of the adjective in there, uh but the water study. So um this is funded from a few different places. Um and so before I, I believe this board has voted on phase three already. Um and then the contract was given to me to sign. I I don't obligate the town to contracts. Um so this, something the select board should sign, we already voted on it, I'll give it to you to to sign. Which um leads me to the next point, which is um there's not of something, a clearly delineated um list that says, you know, vote number two on whatever date. So uh we're gonna start with this, we're gonna go back a little bit, and we're gonna have, um you know, when we go to sign contracts, um you know, what's, I guess there's not a contract in here tonight. But um you know, when we go to send the vote to um this Secretary of the Commonwealth, it will say, select board vote number five um on seven seventeen twenty-four meeting. Um and we'll be able to go back and find these things really quickly. So when I say, where's this? When's this been voted as select board seen this or not? See right away. Um and I hope to incorporate that within to contract documents right alongside with the P O. So those are some broad of things that I'm thinking about, some very specific projects that we're working on. It's been, it's been go-go-go since I've been here, and I've uh I've really enjoyed it. Like I said, there's a lot of exciting projects going on. And I appreciate the the select board's support of of so many um great things here in town and looking forward to to continuing them.
Thank you.
Quick question, the the funding for phase three is all set, though?
Yes. So we're split between, I, yeah, we're split between um a a one-stop grant and ARPA funding. That, um and then I guess to continue on that, there is a phase four. Um so phase four would be um some more viability sort of analysis, and we are waiting on hearing back from another one-stop grant. We should hear back, I believe, in the October timeframe. Um so I'll keep the committee updated on that.
Should we earmark any of the remaining ARPA funds or hold that back?
So I don't have a sense of what the dollar value is from the consultant for what phase four would be. But yeah, before we got the grant back, it's a four hundred thousand dollar grant. Well, if it's one point four million dollar phase four, then we don't have a million dollars to address. Six hundred thousand dollar phase four, then that's something we can discuss.
So maybe.
Yes. Uh yeah, it depends.
Any any uh questions or comments, Jeremy?
Thank you.
And I look forward to having the the votes tracked in that way. I think that will be helpful. All right. So next up is a future agenda topics. Um so uh so a few things. So select board uh goal setting. So this is, in addition to that retreat that the Collin Center wants us to have, we also would like to continue doing the goal, goal setting, uh or I would like us to continue doing that. And I guess we'll see if other people want to also. But uh Mike, Mike Rowley led us through uh some very productive goal-setting sessions. I don't know, summer, fall, uh but we uh it's an opportunity to revisit our goals, like set new goals, see where we are on the goals that we set. And so we will, um I think, once, you know, Jeremy will give us some input about like ways that we can do this. We did an open meeting on it on us on another evening using the police station meeting room. And um I don't know if we'll, we'll do that again, but we'll, we'll be looking to do that. And so I guess, select board members, you'll be hearing from us, looking for sort of a chunk of time outside of our regular select board meetings. So um hopefully also us in the near future. So we're already in fiscal year twenty-five, so it'd be great to do it sort of before the before we get into the second quarter. So so any thoughts on goal setting?
Absolutely.
We want to go set.
Yes.
Just set some goals. Okay, great. The other item is we are, uh it it came up briefly while we were talking about the senior community center project. But we are going to be uh looking at discussing possible um fields in town. So there has been, we've. fields in town. So there has been, we've heard from a lot of community members about wanting more sports fields. So in particular, practice fields. And there is, there is a community group, a Mendon Upton Community Group that is advocating for fields. They have a specific plan that's folded into the school district, so the M U R S D school district. But in addition to that, a lot of community members have looked for like additional practice fields. And so this is something where we want to bring in key players for this. So parks, community preservation and land use and potentially others. I don't, Mike, do you want to add? I know this is something that you've also been.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Elena and I and Dan Byer all attended that meeting about the school effort, which is part of their five year capital plan. So specifically to the school, you know, the varsity sports, I'd say they're looking to do some work up at the high school. But the youth teams, whether it be lacrosse, soccer, football, all raised their hands because it really didn't address their need in terms of practice fields and just field availability in general. So as we've talked about it, we we look at this as more actually broader than what the school's doing. The school's actually a piece of what we think can be a broader plan. But this is, you know, it's taking a step back, looking at what what land does the town have available, what land is viable for field use, but not just field, but recreation. So the idea in my mind is we're going to come more comprehensive view of what what we can do as a town to address recreational needs. So that as a taxpayer and town floor, you're not going to get the one off, I want to do this pickleball court or this disc golf, you've got more of a, an idea of how that one thing's going to fit into a larger a plan or strategy that's going to address recreation as a whole. And to to Elena's point, you know, this is land use, this is parks. This is master plan. So this is, we're going to dovetail this down from master plan. So really putting some action against the good work that was done to drive that master plan, which congratulations, everybody involved on the award they've received. But I think this is sort of taking that and funneling it down and, you know, working with community members to kind of allow people to see what the what the vision looks like and how we can start to chunk it out and actually take action against it.
So so we're looking to schedule this in in August. So we're we're working, we're discussing with some of the people about their availability. We want to make sure that we have those certain parties there for discussion. So stay tuned. That is coming and we'll at this point, it seems it's more likely going to be the second August meeting, which is the twenty first. Just based on availability that I've heard so far about parks commission, but but we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep talking.
I mean, Elena, you just said something. I just want to make sure people understand this is not the select board stepping to say, we're going to do this. This is much more the select board looking to facilitate an inclusive process across all boards and committees.
Looking to invite people to discuss with us how best we can approach this topic.
And we can drive this through our capital plan. That's the other thing is this is not going to be a one off. This is going to dovetail into the same capital program that's supporting fire, highway, police in terms of their needs. Land use and acquisition and application is part of the capital planning process.
Great. So then I guess also so if there are other suggestions about future agenda topics, I know we have a few, a few things sort of coming down the pipeline. I know we have some more formal acknowledgements and recognition coming up of various community members and volunteers and, you know, it might be nice to formally recognize the master plan award and also address the master plan, like talk with the planning board about that. So I mean, there are a number of topics down the road. I do want to encourage other board members to mention things. And I mean, it doesn't have to be now, but I think we will we have a lot of projects going on. And so like this is, you know, we we want to figure out what some of the priorities are. I know the goal setting will get us to some, but like there may be other topics that we want to address soon.
Just one, only one. It's follow on to the Colin Center study, which is around organizational design, but we've also talked about and a couple of times, more of a broader comp classification study. Just trying to get some traction around how we move forward in that space.
Yes, that's a good point. Because yes, we have, we have committed to that. So we need to take those next steps to get yeah, take those next steps, I guess. Mike M, do you have any any other ones you want us to get on agenda soon, come to mind? Or highlight? We'll need, we'll need him back soon. So that's the last item that we have on here. So before we move to executive session, so anyhow. Yeah. Do you have any more like upcoming agenda items that we're going to be talking about? We might as well announce if I guess we'll be talking about the senior center expansion, the senior and community center project again, probably at multiple meetings. And actually, coming up soon, we'll be also talking about the fall the annual town meeting. That's going to need to be opened up like, I feel like it's going to be soon. And yeah, so and then, oh, another, another thing that's come up that actually is related to that is, you know, like looking at our bylaws, it's a thing that we've talked about, we'll talk about it in goal setting is possibly, so there is a so the planning board got a grant from C M R P C to look at the zoning bylaws. But we may want to consider, we've talked about this with our goals, like looking at our bylaws as a whole. And I know I've had like specific suggestions from people about some things that maybe need some revisiting. Such as our annual town meeting day. But anyhow, that that's it. So Mike, are you, are you with us again? So we we're soliciting future agenda topics. And then that's the last thing before we move to executive sessions. I don't know if you have anything that you wanted us to you wanted to highlight for our upcoming meetings.
No, no, and and I definitely was here. I just had my camera off because I was just trying to save battery. That's all.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But
Thank you. Yeah. Great. Yes, we just, we didn't hear you for a moment. So yeah, glad that you're here. And let's see. So then I guess so just so next up, we have executive session, which we will need to move into. Just before we do that, so we were I think we will not be returning to open session. So I'll just mention that our next meeting will be August seventh. So our next planned meeting will be August, Wednesday, August seventh. Occasionally it happens, something comes up that's urgent and we might need to have a meeting in between, such as happened.
I noticed you slid that planned in there. I'm like, what don't I know?
Yeah, well, the next meeting that we know about, but it's actually several weeks away. It's because this is right, July is, I guess, the five, five Wednesdays. And so it's a little bit of a longer gap. So anyhow, so I guess if there isn't anything else on the agenda, I would like to move that we go into open session. And I know there's like see. I guess when holding an executive session remotely, I so this is a hybrid session. I think each public member participating remotely must state that no other person is present or able to hear the discussion at the remote location. Unless the public body has approved the presence of that individual. So so I'm not sure when that, I think I will, so I make the motion, I believe, to enter. Is that correct? It's typically the chair.
Yeah, typically it's the chair.
Okay. And then so we will do the, so I'll make the motion. And then we do the roll call vote. And then additionally, any members who are attending remotely should say that, say that that no, sorry, that no other person is present or able to hear the discussion at the remote location. So let's see. So that being said, I move to approve, sorry. I moved to enter executive session pursuant to session M G L or section M G L thirty eight, twenty one A, reason number three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares highway collective bargaining agreement. And furthermore, the board will not reconvene in open session solely for the purpose of adjournment, adjournment.
Second.
And so we will do a roll call vote. Brugos, aye?
Got it, aye.
Morally, aye. And I am remote and I am by myself and no one else will be able to hear the deliberations.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So then we will not adjourn in open sessions. I think we will.
Do you have, do you have a different link?
So we don't, but I will send.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna log out of this and and log in. Log back in in a couple of minutes. Okay?
Okay.
Stop and leave.
Yeah, stop the recording.